They're not coming.
Um, no.
Asher?
Another grandkid.
Is Asher?
Haven't heard.
Just barely have a form.
Yeah.
Yeah. So actually, you might want to move to the outside so you can see us right in front of them. Feel free, they may actually spot our two over there.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to have to.
Ooh. All right, we're live, thank you.
Well, Steve is not.
Stephen May told me they're not coming.
So if you want to move over there, go ahead, because I can see it from here.
Yeah.
Do you want to move to Steve's?
I could sit at Dave's.
Sit in Steve's, that's fine, too.
Just take your name thing with you, so we know who you are.
Yeah.
Switching sides of the hour.
Feeling a little lonely over here.
All right, so we are, uh, we are live, so, uh, I'm calling meeting the order. First up is the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next up is approval of the minutes of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, and May first, twenty twenty five. We have a motion to approve those minutes.
Submove.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion, corrections, additions, or otherwise? Okay, hearing none, all favor approving the minutes of April twenty eighth and May first. Any comments? Uh, looking to approve the roll of accounts dated May first, twenty twenty five, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-three thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy cents, and dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of a hundred and three thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Do we have a motion to approve those rolls?
Submove.
You have a second. Second parent, okay. Any discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all favor approving those rolls as presented. Any comments? Okay. So before we move further on any agenda, if there's no disagreement on a matter, we would like to move up the presentation from energy management consultants uh, to next on the agenda, um, so that they don't have to hang out with us all evening, as much as I'm sure they'd enjoy it.
It's more personable. That's good to say.
So welcome Tom, Tom Seekins and Adam Ochkins, um, from EMC. Want to start off by saying these guys saved us in a fall. Um, we had a boiler that went out, um, at the high school, and we were very concerned about getting some hot water at the final hour. Um, that would have been a real issue, because we weren't able to get hot water in there, so there would have been, would have been a problem with, with the kitchen, and, and getting dishes cleaned, et cetera. And so, these guys worked hard diligently, got us up and running. And through that process is how we met, and Cory Eisenhower, maintenance director, worked closely with them as well. Um, so that led to other things that they do, um, as a, as a company. And, um, they did an assessment of our facilities, and they'll talk about that. And, um, I think you'll be very interested in hearing what they have to say, um, this evening. So with that, Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Awesome, thank you. Looks like you can see the screen there.
If anybody wants to see the screen, just come right around.
Slide on up, pull up a chair if you need to get a little closer. We got room.
So, yeah, thank you, thanks for having us, appreciate being here. Um, so we've been looking at the buildings for the past year or so. Uh, in conjunction of that, we've been working with, um, Bassavaro Community School as well, doing a very similar process. Except, uh, we had just had a school board meeting with them the other night, where they had already voted on, um, a project move forward, but using the same principles behind what I'm going to show you tonight, which I think is also what kind of led to us being here. As Peter had mentioned, um, we had, uh, got you out of a jam with a domestic cut water heater. Uh, when I say we, I mean Adam, our, one of our HVAC engineers here. And, uh, and then it just led into Peter asking a lot of questions about, um, there's got to be better ways of getting stuff done without having to just constantly go all back out for budget increases, or warrant articles, or bond referendums, and things like that. What are other districts doing to get big capital projects done? There's got to be creative ways of doing this, and of course, there is. Um, utilizing energy and operational savings is primarily the way of doing it. Um, bonds coming off, we were doing a giant project this summer with the school district that had a bond for twenty-five years, it was coming off, it was coming due, and, and it's a lot easier for taxpayers to know that nothing's going to go up, you know? Nothing, you're not, no budget increase, no, again, no warrant article, um, no, um, cost per resident to go up. You're just using that bond money to do a pretty significant project. And I'm talking like roofs, completely new ventilation systems, heat pumps, lighting, doors, windows, siding, um, big capital, you know, intensive projects. So utilizing the bond payment, this is the third phase that we've done with them. Uh, they were able to realize about a seven million dollar project. Bring basically a hundred and twenty thousand square foot high school all back up to, uh, you know, the twenty-first century. So, explaining all that stuff to Peter led us to do just a quick analysis to the schools. Um, we just went through, you know, high level and looked at, um, the buildings. And just like Bassavaro, you guys have done a tremendous job. I, I've just been doing school projects for twenty-two years, so I've done just hundreds of these school projects. So I wouldn't say that you've done a great job taking care of your schools if you hadn't, because I've seen a lot of those that, that have not, and, um, you guys have done a great job. I mean, it's just, everything has a life expectancy, and you're at it, and then some. Right around ninety to twenty-five years is the ashtray standard for ventilation equipment, almost universally speaking, whether it's an air handler, or, um, you know, a unit or a piece of equipment in the classroom, they're all about the same, and you're, you're at, you know, thirty-five, thirty-three years. Again, just like Bassavaro, so very similar conditions. So it's time to start planning ahead, and ventilation equipment is very expensive. It can be millions of dollars if you have in every school, and it's, um, you know, it's hard to get into the budget when it's still working, technically, right? Doesn't mean it's not going to fail, because it will. Um, and then you're in a reactive state where you're just replacing it with things on the shelf, or not something that might be more efficient, or engineering it the right way, right? Um, so you've got plenty of that. There's a lot of savings to be had in the boiler rooms, you've got cast iron sectional boilers everywhere. Right now, cast iron sectional boilers are, are a big problem, um, across the country, in cold climates, of course. But if you lose a section, which these are, just sectional boilers, then you're probably down twenty to twenty-five weeks. Um, and then you're down to one boiler, so if you lose the other boiler, then of course, you know, you're, you're pausing school or doing temporary heat outside, which can get very costly. Um, this is just some pictures of the sections that I was talking about. Um, just showing, showing some, uh, potential failures coming up, or has had failures. And actually, we helped you in that situation, too, where someone had come in and said, um, something about needing a new section for twenty-six thousand dollars, and we had just came up, uh, Joe and Adam pulled the jackets off the boiler, figured it was just a seal, and it ended up being a twenty-five hundred dollar fix. So there's so many different ways of looking at this stuff, but from consultant's standpoint, that's our job, is to make sure that you're embedded with the right contractors with the right pricing, and that's what we've done. So you burn about thirty thousand gallons of oil in each one of these schools, which is a fair amount. Um, obviously, going to propane would be a big energy saver, so that's kind of a no-brainer. You're talking in the, in the neighborhood of just twenty thousand dollars a year in each school, just by converting to high-efficiency condensed boilers, gas boilers. Using that savings, I have a tool that we're going to show you, and how you can get, implement other measures, like windows, uh, which are all the same vintage, um, you know, other pieces of ventilation equipment that need to be replaced, lumping them in with things that have strong savings, like boiler conversions and lighting conversions, and then spreading it out with a taxes employees purchase, which every school in town that I've been dealing with, ninety-nine percent of them have been through a taxes employees purchase. It's a great tool for schools and municipalities to use, it's just for you, um, companies like us could not use it. They give you a whole year of no payments, so if you decide to go forward with a project like Bassavaro just voted on, their first payment's not due until July of two thousand and twenty-six. And the whole concept is that they allow you a year of energy savings before you start making the payments. So you're starting to encumber, garner those savings, don't take out of your budget, and you take that forty thousand dollars for the boilers, for example, and use that towards your payment. So that, that could yield a half a million dollars improvements to the schools, without having to go up to the taxpayers for a budget increase or, um, more money, basically. You use the money in your current budget to make these things happen. Any questions as we go, please, please just fire away, but I won't spend a lot of time on the slides. I mean, I think that people walk through the buildings, um, sure Cory would be happy to bring you through, but he's taken on great facilities, but again, everything is literally at the end of its useful life about a decade ago. So he's, it's, it is a good time to start planning ahead. Just things, little things like domestic cut water mixing valves, um, which Adams, he knows all too well in this district. Um, replacing things like the piping and the PVC, CPVC water, domestic cut water piping. All their HVAC stuff, for the most part, with the exception, of course, the middle school, um, old refrigerant, obsolete refrigerant. Um, you just got to start getting ahead of that. You don't, you don't want to wait until you're in a reactive state, which is exactly why we're here. Old building automation systems, all pneumatic. A lot of your schools, um, a lot of your classrooms are run via compressed air, which is, um, um, the most inefficient way of doing it, is using a compressor. Because you've got pneumatic tubes going through these buildings, it cracks over time, it leaks, but the compressor continues to pump air through those tubes, but it's leaking, and you can't get to it on ceilings or above ceilings, behind walls. And so that compressor just runs continuously to try to keep the valves to open and close to provide heat or not, right? So replacing that in a systematic, pragmatic manner, where you're not doing a million-dollar control job, but breaking it into phases, which is what we went there. Elementary school, for sure, has probably the most, um, savings to capture. And these would be the kind of boiler systems that we'd be talking about, that we've done with, um, we did twenty-six school boiler rooms last year, all with gas-fired condensing boilers, and, um, just tremendous savings that you guys would have here. For example, taking all these pumps that are hanging from the ceiling, you see you've got five, um, main circulating pumps there, getting that to a situation where there'd be two circulating pumps on the ground, easily serviced, with frequency drives to save a lot of energy. You have one pump and one pump for backup. It's a way easier, way more efficient way of doing things. And this is just showing you the calculations that we use for savings to, to show that project. Domestic cut water improvements. As you can see, a lot of fittings, a lot of corrosion, a lot of decay, that stuff, it, it all fails at some point. And it's, it's, you know, it's there. You can see it's evidence, it's not just our opinion, it's, it's the facts, which is why we're helping you guys out with domestic water heater, because it just, it just reached the end of its useful life. Transformers, just something as silly as an electronic transformer, you've got them everywhere, they're in the storeroom closets for the most part. They hum, they just pound, you can hear them outside the door, you shouldn't, you shouldn't hear them, but they're, again, they have a life expectancy. Tremendous waste, waste of energy. There's incentive to replace those for efficiency main, along with heat pumps and LED lighting. So there's a lot of money to capture there, which we would definitely do. And again, that's the compressor that I was talking about, that runs the control system for the school. And things like VRF, it's a great opportunity, we're doing a VRF for the entire second floor of the Bassavaro Community School. They reach temperatures of the nineties sometimes, and, and same with many other school systems. And right now, efficiency main has a funding opportunity notice that is about eighteen dollars a square foot for heat pumps, which, um, we did a project for Kittery Schools where an entire VRF job, uh, they paid over half the entire air conditioning job for that. So the, the money is real, it was an eight hundred thousand dollars incentive that, that we got for that project. So real money, you know, not just a couple bucks here and there. And just showing the calculations, this is some of the lighting, much like this right here. There's a, a lot better way of doing this, you can also get these flush mounted, so that they're not hanging down, and kids just love to throw pincers up there, or try to jump up and hang on them, or nine million other things, we share fun stories Cory could tell you about, but, um, there's three tubes running through this, you could go to one LED diode, and it would save a tremendous amount of energy. And you can go flush mount, so it looks cleaner and brighter. Things like addressing PFAS, uh, that's something that we include in a lot of projects, that's going to be new standards coming up very soon. Those are going to, um, those are going to be a real issue, not so much for you guys at this point, but it's something to get a hold of. And, um, building envelope, again, as you can see, all this storefront glass, many cases, single pane, leaks like crazy. And you can just do weatherization as a first step, but at some point, you should really start looking at phasing and window replacements, like a lot of schools do. So that's just like a, a quick overview of the, of the, um, work that we did. So this is a, you see that? See that? Okay. So this is, uh, the tool I was talking about that allows you to. Oh, wait. I think we got that same problem. It's that same mouse that got an image, mouse image thing that we were doing with before. See, it's got like a mouse tracer in there? Ooh, it's in here. Worked that down. So this is an example of a, a different school system, where they needed a way to develop a capital plan. And so after you do your analysis, you put everything into this tool, you put everything into this tool. It's got all the buildings listed on the right-hand side there, listed by priority, and it allows you to kind of pick and choose a project that's financially palatable, based on a number of different parameters. Um, big things, uh, big ticket items that have big savings, you're going to want to get those included, which is why you can see they've got the heating plan of the high school clicked in here, because it has great savings. It's also something that really needs to be done. Um, we've got about a hundred and thirty measures here, I think, that we looked at, from, again, replacements of air handlers, um, insulation, building automation improvements, uh, retrocommissioning of the buildings. A lot of schools in Maine, or every school in Maine, that's thirty-five years old, is not running the way it was originally designed. Whether you had twelve kids in a classroom, now you have twenty-five, or vice versa, right? So retrocommissioning of classrooms is one of the, arguably, one of the best measures we could do, because it doesn't cost a lot, or if any, dollars, and to bring in the amount of air that you need today, uh, per occupant. So if you dropped an enrollment, recommission the buildings to, to adjust to who's in the classrooms today. So if you're not bringing in outside air in January, February, March, to accommodate a class with thirty kids that now has twelve in it, you know, you're spending a lot of money in, in ventilation, which you don't have to, because you're tempering your fossil fuels. So that's an easy one to do. Um, this has got window improvements, door improvements. Um, we are doing about fifty doors in this, in this particular project this summer. LED lights were chosen, so all you have to do, when we present these things, is you click on what you think is, again, financially palatable, and you bring it into a cash flow tool. And this shows you the amortization schedule that goes across the top. So this is year one, two, three, so on and so forth, of a fifteen-year taxes employees purchase. So it identifies energy savings, operational savings, and then your principal interest payment, which is flat for the entire term, right? And it allows you to see, okay, based on all those measures chosen, we would have to come up with a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars a year to put towards this, because a lot of things that we chose, like doors and windows, um, it's a few million dollar project, doesn't have a ton of savings. But we know we have some money in our budget, whether it's a bond coming, um, through, or money that you had earmarked for certain repairs that you, you can now use towards this payment. That's your call, so basically, work that number into this annual contribution. That, that allows you to kind of figure out, there's no sense in for us doing, this whole analysis took about, I don't know, a hundred and ninety to a hundred and twenty days, this, they have six schools though, this particular district, um, this is in Creport. So we knew going into it, the things that they really wanted to, to address, right? And we can capture them by knowing what kind of budgets are there. We don't have to go crazy with full engineering, spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering things that just aren't ever going to happen. Let's focus on the things that are really the problem, like imminent failures for boilers, or, you know, you've got to have heat and ventilation in your schools, that's obviously fairly important. So if there's weak points there, you focus on those, and you move on to the next, and you phase it out. So you pick and choose them, but then you come up with this thing we call the option builder. And this is what they use as a capital improvement plan. So, whoa, what was that? Second, there we go. I know that's going to be hard to see, but... So this was phase one, which is two thousand and twenty-four budget. Phase two is two thousand and twenty-five budget, so on and so forth. So what they basically did is they laid out a plan to their community that, all right, we don't have a lot of money in the world to do this at once, but we have deferred maintenance all over the place. So that yellow line represents the amount of money they're going to have to bring to the table for that particular project, and it's listed below. What was cool about this situation is we built this actually specifically for them, so they can print this out, put it on the table, just like you guys are at, and say, all right, in a perfect world, we could do X, Y, and Z. What happens if we take the boiler room off for now and, and add ten doors, because they're all rusted out, and they're leaking, like I said? Or we do the, the high school facing, um, windows, to match the middle school. So you go back and forth in this, in this tool, and plug them in and plug them out, and it changes the annual amount you're going to pay, because it's going to take away energy savings attached to that particular measure, or add money to it, because it's a bigger number. And then you just go into the option builder, and you just assign it to this option here, or a second option, or a third option. You can say, hey, look, those things are actually running fine, we know they're inefficient, we know they're going to fail at some point, but let's, we could wait another three to five years, so that makes it to the back of the bus, on the right-hand side of that ledger. But this ultimately ends up being a capital plan, but instead of just doing an energy analysis, which we've all done, we've done hundreds of them, they end up sitting in a binder in someone's office that just tells you what you already know, which is you've got deferred maintenance, you've got millions of dollars in deferred maintenance. What it's not telling you is how the heck are we actually going to make these things come to life, right? Without just going out for a five million dollar bond or something. In this case, you're using it, again, in a very pragmatic way of, let's capture the things that have strong energy savings for a phase one. It may not, it may not, um, be necessary to, to attribute any money in phase one, because you've got strong savings like boilers and LED lighting throughout the entire district. Building envelope improvements throughout the entire district. Obviously, with the exception of the middle school, pretty good shape, as it should be. But, uh, if you've got things coming off a bond or something like that, um, the more you can leverage with other buildings, whether it's with the town buildings or your own buildings, economy as a scale allows you to get more energy savings, put it in the same lease purchase, and allows you to capture more, uh, projects, or more measures. And then just put the other ones in phase two, phase three. So that's kind of what we've laid out here, um, Peter and his team, and, um, and that's kind of the process.
Um, well, I'll ask a question, because it's been a while, we, we have done, you know, a couple of these projects over my life here. And the savings was enough that it essentially covered the bond payments. So you mentioned the big hitters in the beginning with heating systems and things like that, being some of the big ones, but having not seen the detail of, of this, how far into this, does it... Does the savings, do the expected savings cover the bond payments all the way through, or at what point? Like through the heating and lighting systems, then after that, it's more about, you know, some beyond that that's in maintenance and such that we ought to be doing anyway, but
Right.
They're not necessarily savings, they're just tired.
Great question. Uh, so that's why with the taxes employees purchase, the state allows you legally to go up to twenty years. But, but you're really, banks, most banks that do the taxes employees purchase, uh, finance mechanisms really don't love twenty years, the rates get worse, because everything that you're putting in, if life expectancy is twenty years. So technically speaking, at the end of that term, it's going to be worth
Start all over.
Right, you're starting all over again, same with like lights. So they're going to give you the best rates between fifteen and seventeen-year terms, because they look at it like, okay, because it's not a bond, you're not bonded to that payment. Through, through a taxes employees purchase, the non-approbation clause exists, which basically says if you, if you can't encumber your, your budget, year five, technically speaking, you know, um, there's negotiations to be had, that you're not having, you can't keep that building anymore. So everything that you put into that building, through said project, through the lease purchase mechanism, you're not responsible for it anymore. So the bank literally owns all that risk of all the, the assets that you're putting in, even though they're attached to the building. So that's the way that mechanism's set up. So, yeah, to your point, you're not going to put in, you know, heat pumps, lighting, and everything that you're going to be putting in here, is going to far exceed the term of the financing. But along the way, kind of like I just showed you, year three, they're already replacing other things. So there is an opportunity to refinance it, and try to hopefully capture a better rate. You can refinance through a tax exempt lease purchase, they don't love you to do it every other year, um, but they will let you do it a couple times. So we've done that with some school systems where the rates dropped considerably, and they were able to save fifty thousand dollars a year, and just an interest rate dropped from a four and a half percent to a two and a half percent, you know? So that's a good time to re-up another phase and get some things down that you necessarily have money for. Yeah. We've got to work it into the financing tool that these are the measures that are going to have value for a major.
And that is a tax-exempt lease purchase. Tax-exempt lease purchase.
Yep. It's a TELP is the acronym, that... Not every bank does it, you know, I'd love for more banks to do it, because essentially, as your consulting and engineering firm, what we do is we, we know we don't have to sell you guys anything, we're not selling anything. We put together this information, allow you to pick and choose the stuff that you want, get to the banks, send everything to the bank, and then they will provide, we provide the savings, all the things that you're putting in, that you've chosen to put in, put it together in a package, they look at it, and they provide you a competitive bid in the term.
That's a federal program or state program?
It's a federal program. So Bank of America has its own taxes employees purchasing team, TD Bank has their own taxes employees purchasing team. Inniscore Bank in Maine has done them in the past, um, municipal leasing consultants still do them. So we don't, we get paid like a general contractor, okay, ten percent, that's what we charge to do our projects, um, to engineer and manage them. That's, you're not tied, we're not tied to that financing mechanism at all. Um, all we do is set it up so that it gives you guys the best and final rate you get, it gets put into an escrow, and then we draw down to it like a construction project. So if we order boilers, we would send a requisition, if it matters, the one that is the administrator of that account, yep, go ahead, send it out, they wire this money to get a contractor, and so on and so forth, that's basically how it works. But you're only, unlike a bond, so if you did a ten million dollar project, like the one we were doing this summer, is seven and a half million dollar project per school, they're not paying interest on seven and a half million, they're only paying interest on what they've drawn down, which is going to save them a ton of money, because some of these things we're not going to do for like another eight months, right? This is a big, long construction project. But because you have a year of no payments, a typical construction project that you, that you take on as a phase one, is not going to exceed a year, because you want it all done, so you start to save it. Yeah, then you do another project, you know? That project we're doing, the big one this summer, that's our fourth project with those guys, you know?
And then basically, they're just rolling the savings into the next?
Yeah, if there's some, so the first few phases, as I explained it, is Peter, is that, you know, you're going to capture all the low hanging fruit, so to speak, the lights, the boiler conversions, that's going to be a remarkable project. Ellsworth's project we did last year was a three million dollar phase one, they had to come up with nothing for their annual payment. Their second project we're doing this year is some sprinkler systems, and fire alarm systems, and a bunch of other things that has very little savings, because they captured all the prior projects. So this time around, they're budgeting on what was it. But during the engineering process, like we did for them, we filled out revolving renovation fund applications, and got them one point eight million dollars revolving renovation funds. Because we're here doing all this analysis, when those things come available for schools to capture that kind of money, we've already got all the information there, and just provide it, and, um, hopefully get some free money. That would be, that would be even a better mechanism, because that's zero percent financing, and depending on your free reduced mortgage percentage, you get thirty to forty percent. I don't know if you've captured some of that in the past, Peter, or not, but it's hard to get.
It's hard to get, and there's not a big pot.
Yeah, I know.
There's a lot of people have projects.
Right, it's coming back again this coming year, but I don't know how much they're going to have, they don't tell you until it's, you know, usually like a few million dollars, and you've got a hundred schools going after it, but that's something, as you're, something we would go after, just so people know, that, you know, you're not just going to just assume you're going to do a lease purchase, try to get as much free money as you can, use it towards the project. Oftentimes, we use, like in Kittery Schools, we did that, that one point six million dollar, um, AC product, VRF, which is a heat pump, is the primary source of heating and cooling for an entire school, that eight- That eight hundred thousand dollar incentive, they use as their down payment. So we were willing to just hold the last payment until we got paid from efficiency main. So you can use that as a down payment, so you're not paying interest on that money too. There's a lot of creative ways to make this, you know, work, like using efficiency main incentives as your down payment, so you don't have to come up with any money.
So efficiency main, how liable is that over the longer term here, given some of the federal changes and such?
Yeah, Peter, that's the same thing on the day. Obviously, as I could, Chris, of all, I wouldn't be standing here right now, you know? If I could predict the future on what the federal government is gonna do, but it hasn't, nothing, the one, the first thing I was telling you is that I thought was gonna go away was the IRA money associated with the solar renewable energy inflation reduction act money. So solar is a thirty percent rebate or incentive, and it hasn't gone away. With the new administration, they said they were gonna take it away, but they haven't, so I think they're gonna leave it. I don't think it's gonna be nearly as bad as most people think it was going to be with the new regime, right? I think it's, we haven't seen anything taken off the table yet. What efficiency main has is a pot of money every year, and they have to disperse it. And if they don't, it usually gets, it's brought back in the form of a funding opportunity notice, which is what is happening right now, which is increased incentives, or a program opportunity notice for pellet boilers. Those are all viable right now, but those applications have to be in by the end of June, and construction has to be in by the end of November for heat pumps. So they tie you to timelines, it's not necessarily a federal thing, but it's efficiency main's thing. The federal thing, we're not that concerned about, it's the efficiency main timeframes, because that's what you really have to deal with. You know, there's a lot of paperwork and engineering that goes in those heat pump applications. But that's what they're primarily giving money away for right now. Lighting for, they say, another year or so, they said they were gonna stop it last year, but it's still available. It just keeps going down, because now complex forcements are now illegal, and you're mandated to buy LED. So efficiency main naturally, being an incentive program, they're not gonna provide an incentive for something you're mandated to replace. So, yeah, LED lights have been pretty popular this year, because people are trying to capture some money before it goes away.
I guess I'm out of questions, but if other people have some, jump in.
I have a question, but I don't know, I don't know if I can articulate it, but if, so if I understand correctly, basically, what you're trying to sell us on here is just kind of a program of maintenance and replacement of updated things, right? Is that what we're doing here?
Not so much maintenance, we're not, we're a consulting and engineering company, we don't do the maintenance. It's just, you know, we're trying, and we put together bids specs, garner the competitive bids. Once you decide on a project, that's, that actually leads me into probably an important point here, so. Once you pick a project, say it's a boiler room, lighting, and ventilation, you say, this is what we wanna go forward with, you as a board, you vote, and you move forward with it. We then get the drawings done, we do drawings, a bid spec, we walk the prospective bidders through, we show you all the bids, and you select the bidder, you know, the lowest bid, lowest qualified bid, because sometimes low bids, what you get, which is low bid, you don't necessarily want that. So this process is really the only legal way to design bid build a project. You see all the bids from the contractors, based on their reputation, you choose X, Y, Z contractors to do the project. You're paying us as a consultant, ten percent to engineer and then manage the job, that's it, that's all you're paying us for. The maintenance side of it, we'll help you put together maintenance bids after the fact, we've been talking to Cory about that. I just did that for Searsport and a bunch of other schools, where we put together a bid spec for service, and then we do the same thing, we don't charge for that kind of stuff. We'll help you walk the contractors through, get competitive bids for service, and then let you guys deal directly with that, but we don't do the service part.
Okay, but so, let's assume then that we go ahead and map out a course of replacement things, of projects that we wanna do. But, and let's say, for example, that, I don't think this would apply to us, but let's say something failed, like a sprinkler system failed, but that was something that we didn't have on the schedule until a couple of years down the road or something like that. Would that be like something that would be kind of built into the?
Absolutely.
Thing, you know what I mean, so it wouldn't be a surprise, you know, if it's already, if we already have kind of built, you know, establishes plan?
You shift your focus, you gotta be fluid in this thing. I mean, it's not like you have something right now that's gonna blow up, and you really need to get your arms around it, right? Something that's really gonna cause a major issue, like maybe school doesn't start, like the domestic hot water boiler. We literally shifted everything and focused on just that, because of the importance of having hot water for school.
So I mean, so your hands aren't gonna be tied, or?
No.
One thing, as air handlers get replaced, we have several units that are of the same style, same model. As we get units replaced, we can keep the crucial parts from the ones that we replaced on hand, or if we have one that isn't gonna be replaced for another three or four years, we have it on hand, that if we do have a major failure, we have the spare motor, a spare shiv, we have a spare squirrel cage, we have the spare parts from one that we already replaced that could fit out of the jam, because some of those pieces of equipment are obsolete. There might be, they might be several month leak time to get in, which we're looking at that as well. When we do units, we do have several, one, the facility where we can keep some of the spare parts, instead of just getting rid of the whole unit, we can keep them for emergency situations.
Yeah, and that's the power of this amortization tool here, that allows you to take that number, and if you said, okay, we have two hundred thousand dollars up towards this per year, you literally can just go back and forth in this tool and add more equipment into it, until you get to the point where it meets the threshold where you're at, with what you have for money to spend on an annual basis. That's what I meant by, we don't sell you anything, you guys pick what you can do financially, and you choose the project, right? That's how it essentially works. It baked into there, again, in your first phase, you're gonna have considerable energy savings. That's gonna be a no-brainer to choose those things. Phase two and phase three, you know, that's up to you and how you wanna encumber that money. It's, you'll have all the information you need to get there. But this tool is pretty powerful, because you've got a hundred and thirty measures on here. You'd be, at schools, that's exactly how they did it. They used their bond coming off, and they were able to do, again, almost an eight million dollar project, just using half the bond payment they had coming off. So all these things they needed to get done, leaking roof, thirty-five-year old ventilation, new doors, new windows for the entire high school, repaving the parking lot, all these things they were able to capture, it still decreased their budget a little bit, because they took a portion of that bond payment off, but used a three-quarters of it to basically get their high school back up to, you know, the twenty-first century, so.
So was I right in hearing you that you would help us find the free money? That you have, you have that information that you would share with us?
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, any pot of money that comes up, so, again, to your point in Ellsworth, we were doing a different project. We were doing an energy project like this, and revolving renovation money came out, a big pot of it. And they had, it was primarily geared around life safety improvements. So we were able to get an elevator replaced for them, add a fire alarm and a sprinkler system, and got them one point eight million dollars, because we were already doing the analysis in the building. So we just put together, we shifted our attention to that at that point, because there's, again, there's nothing that was evident in terms of failure. So let's focus on revolving renovation fund money right now. And if they get it, that's a great phase two, which is that ultimate win it ended up being. We're doing a phase two and phase three for them this summer. Part of it is revolving renovation fund projects, coupled with things that have energy savings. So, yeah, of course, right here, you might as well.
One other quick question, you might not be the right person to ask about this, but I've heard recently that LED lighting, it basically emits, it's a blue, it's a blue light, right? So it's kind of same kind of light that comes off your computer screen.
In some cases.
It's one of those problems for some people, right, it's blue light, apparently, do you know anything about that?
You know.
No problems?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's clean light, but you can change the caliber of the light, these are all, not these ones, but new LED lights, you can change the caliber, in other words, the color. So you can change the color that is most attractive for that particular environment. You're also gonna be able to dim them down to the level of light that you want at your desk level. So when we engineer lighting solutions, your engineering are primarily, to simplify it, forty-foot candles at the desk level, which is the, studies show that that's the most optimal light for a desk level in a classroom. That's the optimal learning life, learning ability for the average student. But you're gonna have, parts of the building have different types of students, they may want a different type of light. So you can adjust most auto lights these days to accommodate sensitivity and all these other things, you know? And lighting fixtures now comes standard from the factory with sensors built into every fixture, so not just a big sensor in the middle of the room that shuts them on and off, occupancy sensors. Every light has its own sensor, so anything near a window bank would automatically dim down based on outside light, you know, so your daylight harnessing, things like that. Lighting, yes, has come on, it's a very, very popular way. We did probably ten million dollars in lighting projects just in schools last, that last summer, so we've done a ton.
So this tool that you have here, you've got various items listed and such, and what's, for example, you mentioned doors, that might be rusting out or that sort of thing, okay? Is the detail of that in there, I mean, you might have doors listed, but do we know that, you know, these doors are rusting out versus, well, they'd just be more energy efficient if we just replaced them? I mean, do we have that whole picture in that, or is that something, we gotta go to Cory to get more of that?
No, so what I'm here to do today is not selling you guys or anything, I'm showing the process. You guys are gonna have to do an RFQ, doesn't mean you can just select us, we fully understand that. You're gonna do an RFQ to get companies like ours to respond, and you can come with that, is the best fit for you. Once you do that, you'll have all the data you need. So like Vassalboro, they did an RFQ, they had selected us, and we have every single door, everything in that district, every light switch, every bulb in the district, in an analysis and a report. So this summer, we'll probably end up doing like four of their exterior doors, and the rest of them that you can't see through, we're just weatherizing them, so putting in new astragulls and ceiling all around, door sweeps and things like that, because they're fine, they're just a little bit weathered. So focusing on the ones that literally have rust in the bottom of them, or kids have kicked them, or, you know, those doors think are beating in most schools.
And we've done some replacements as well, so.
Yeah.
But, so this tool you're talking about, I guess the question is, is you mentioned we'd have that, and as a board, we'd be able to kick these things around and figure out what our priorities are.
Exactly.
I guess, what would be the timeline, we would have that sort of information, to be able to move forward with consideration of such things?
Again, you know, you're probably talking a couple of months of further analysis to get everything that you really need, unless there's something, to your point, that shifts, and you're like, hey, we really wanna focus on this, and that's something you just jump to, right? But it's a couple of months of further analysis and data collecting and getting a full list of everything.
I mean, obviously, the, you know, the imminent risk of failure items should be high on the list.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether they have payback or not, from the standpoint of, would it prevent us from opening schools on a given day? Which domestic hot water would be one of those. Not all our windows are gonna fail tomorrow, so those wouldn't be as imminent versus, you know, when you say HVAC and those sorts of things. So having that detailed information, obviously, is key to any decision making.
It helps you make an educated decision, right?
Yeah.
And you do it in a thoughtful, pragmatic way, where you're not replacing things on the run, because you're gonna end up with the same head of equipment that's the most readily available to replace it, fails during the time of year that you need it. Versus the big project that I just alluded to, we were engineering that project a year ago, so it allowed us to get the best contractors to bid on it. That's what you want. Engineering it the right way, so we're, you know, we're doing heat recovery, we're doing things like all the advanced lighting controls, building automation systems that are not proprietary, taking the time to build up this specs where we can get contractors to bid on this, so you're not stuck with any contractors by the time we're done with this project. As a consultant, we're not trying to service anything, we're not trying to get your business for the next twenty years. We want you to have non-proprietary equipment through the entire district. We have time to do that, so when things do fail, you're already in a better situation. You're not replacing a controller that runs heat and air conditioning for the gym that's proprietary, because if it fails, you're gonna put the same thing in again. You know, getting ahead of stuff like that has put you guys in a much better position in the next twenty-five years. Yeah.
I understand Cory has a strong HVAC background as well, so that's helpful.
Yeah, and we did a, we did a survey there in Vassalboro, a teacher's survey, and a lot of the teachers just talk about, you know, what are the things that you would like to see better in your classroom in regards to HVAC infrastructure, not, you know, about a different color or like shades or this, it's what would make your learning environment better? And it was temperature control in Vassalboro, so, and that's because it's being run via compressor. It's about as antiquated as technology gets with temperature control, which is no surprise that there's a fluctuation from six degrees in one classroom, and the next classroom warmer is eighty-two. So kids are going from one classroom to the next with a sweatshirt on, then a sweatshirt on, a jacket on, a jacket off, or opening windows, stuff like that. So that was why temperature control became part of their phase one, as the top thing that they looked at. So when they sat around the table as a committee, which I'm sure you guys would do the same thing, every one of these options had temperature control in it as their top priority, to address right off the bat. And getting away from the proprietary system, so that their service contract drops considerably, hopefully, when it's all said and done, because now you have the ability to go out to other contractors to get this. You lose, if you lose a panel, whatever contractor that has that proprietary piece of equipment, that controller, well, it's not necessary anymore, you can go to another one, so you don't just have to take the price that they give you. You plan it out, and you can get to that.
When? Okay, so, life expectancy for current equipment, twenty to twenty-five-year life cycle for most things, maybe a little bit longer for other things, a little bit shorter for that. When we, Cory, work with you, do you prioritize and take a look at that and say, okay, elementary school, this is where this is at in the life cycle process? And that's information that we have, that we would have when we're actually looking at this. So we know what we have approx, a guesstimate
Absolutely.
On its remaining duration.
Yep, hundred percent. And it's all, we put it right in this workbook. So this workbook starts from, you know, with the equipment, and all this stuff, and every single school, the cash flow associated, whichever you pick, here's your plan, maybe. And then another tab would be all your equipment with its age next to it, and identifying what's gonna be part of phase one, what's part of phase two, so on and so forth. In the case of Vassalboro, everything is literally the same exact age, except for wire handler. So it became a factor of, what can we actually get done this summer, based on its proximity in the building? So you're ripping on any handle that's above a bunch of classrooms, it's not really conducive for learning, you know? If you have a summer to do that, great. We're probably gonna do the handlers above the kitchen that are outside, that serve the gym and the cafeteria, because they voted on doing two-way handlers, just to get ahead of them. You know, they're not, they're not failed, they have not failed, but failure is gonna happen. So, to your point, what can you actually get done based on its location of the building and its age?
I mean, we've been through a couple of energy efficiency projects here, and like you said, online, my time here, and they've all worked out well. The paybacks were there, as presented, which was all good. And of course, having been involved in many building projects in the modern time as well.
Yeah.
You know, I got a pretty good handle on what is however old, but, yeah, so it'd be interesting to see this spreadsheet and see what, you know, obviously, I'm not the kind of person walking around the building every day like Cory, he might be, and I'm sure he, it's one of the good times to do it too, to see what, you know, where where the perspectives are for failure, but.
Most of your stuff is on the roof, which makes it easier from an analysis standpoint, so it would take a lot less time to do an analysis. It's not great for longevity of equipment, you know, the reason why this stuff in Vassalboro lasts as long is it's inside. There's really nothing on the roof in terms of violation of equipment, so obviously, that can shrink the life of the equipment, but that's why it's important to put in good stuff, you know? Good equipment that's gonna last you, this school year, which is, there's actually standard twenty to twenty-five years, then there's the school expectancy, which is like another third of that, right? I mean, however, you always say, this is our new school, and it's twenty-five years old.
Right, we have one of those, so, yeah.
But it happens everywhere, that school's gonna be fine, it's our new school, that school is also at the end of its useful life.
Yeah.
It's scary, because it happens quickly, but, yeah.
So just to clarify, you, your organization does the, kind of like the analysis, which is what that stuff that was there, and then you do the contracting, right? And then, and for payment of that, you get ten percent of the
Whatever the project is.
Whatever the cost of the project.
You let, you see all of our costs, as we did with you guys already. We let, you see all of our costs as we did with you guys already for domestic hot water heater. You, we have a spreadsheet, we put the bids from the contractors in it, you see the actual bid. There's no game played, you see all your numbers, you see every dollar the district's spending. There's nothing that we can or desire to hide. So you, you see right in there that it costs us one and a half percent to do the engineering, two percent to do the project management. Uh, we typically carry a risk, which is contingency dollars.
Yeah.
So if you're ripping out, you know, the, the heart of a building to heat it and you, you're expecting nothing to go wrong, you probably shouldn't be doing this work, right? So you wanna carry a couple percentage points and if nothing goes wrong, you know what that money is from the beginning, so that you know you've got some contingency dollars there left over to make some includes that maybe weren't on your list.
Yeah.
That's where we wanna see. We did a project last year where we filled in some wells and we were told initially that we didn't have to do any sort of type of grout or Department of Energy type of, you know, guidelines, turned out that was not true and it was an eighty thousand dollar fill and we had to pay for that because in this process, as the energy services company or consulting and engineering firm, they were our bid specs. So we can't go back to you and like a general, like a normal general contracting job and say, you were supposed to do this a different way, it's gonna cost you guys eighty thousand. Sorry, we didn't know, but we told it, didn't have to happen. It was our design. So because we missed it, we had to pay eighty thousand dollars to heat it. Now, it's my job as the president of DMC not to get us in those situations, but in that particular case, that was my fault, so. That's not, that's just our firm, I'm pretty sure any firm that does this in the state would, would say the same thing. They have to. There's no chain orders in this process.
So what's the process? Is the process to discuss this and then move forward and say, let's do this? Let's take a look because I would like to get a look at your slides. They were rather small, I would, I would like to.
Oh, sure.
Get a look at that presentation.
Actually, Peter, I mean, you guys all have them, thank you. I could PDF them and you can send them to whoever.
Yeah.
Again, that was a a fairly quick overview of what we typically do.
Yeah.
Right? It was just enough to say, okay, this is what you're kinda, you're working with. And that was the first thing Peter had us do. After we got domestic hot water working, hey, you just put this together for us so we have a good idea of what we're doing.
Yeah.
And, um, oh, we didn't charge you guys to do that, we just put it together, so. The process is basically you, by law, in the state of Maine, you have to advertise in the Kennebec Journal because that's a central paper, um, for at least a week. You have to allow for at least fourteen business days for companies like ours to respond. And you have to interview at least three companies. If you get two companies that respond, obviously you only interview what you get. There has to be a board member as part of that interview committee, at least one, superintendent obviously, and then whatever, whoever else wants to be part of that process. If the town manager wanna be part of it, it could be, it's your call, but that's by law, that's who has to be part of it. And then you choose a company and you enter into typically a letter of understanding, a letter of intent. You're not contractually obligated to anything until you actually figure out what your project looks like. That's the risk for companies like ours is that you don't pay us upfront, whether it's us or anyone else. You get paid based on the things that you actually implement as the projects move forward.
And this entire process is not a legal requirement, but it makes pretty good fiscal sense to take care of your equipment, take care of the buildings that you've been entrusted with, but there is no, there's no statutory requirement that says every school district has to run out and find and do energy audits and this kind of stuff.
No.
Okay.
It's no law that says you have to do it. Obviously, it's, um, why I'm here is, is again, if you're, it's, what are other districts doing creatively to get stuff done like this? And, um, that's how the conversation started, but, yeah, I mean, you have to maintain the things that you're playing with.
Right.
That would be silly not to, you know? Yeah. Because the company is guaranteeing savings too, so, you know, if you don't maintain the boilers that you put in that are supposed to be ninety-four percent efficient, well, you can't expect them to be ninety-four percent efficient.
Right, for now, servicing.
Right.
Now, when we're done, do you leave a, or is there a built-in maintenance schedule that comes with this that says, okay, you're installing this system, so in year three, this is something, year six, year nine?
Yeah.
That, that's built in?
It's all built in. And a lot of times we'll actually ask for service numbers for companies, like automation companies, because they're one of the ones, there's a lot of gotchas and mills where they have a software, a mandated software upgrade every year and it could be as much as twenty-five thousand dollars, which is usually bogus. But they could be a little bit upfront and then whack you with thirty thousand dollars in fees that the other companies didn't have. So it's our job as your consulting firm, again, like other companies would do, make sure that you're not getting into a situation like that. You're not getting proprietary controls, you're not getting, um, software updates that you have to have that other companies don't have, you know, making sure you're getting bids from companies that aren't gonna just trap you. You know, that's a big part of it. And asking for their maintenance cost. What, what's your annual cost of servicing for others? If they do it. Some companies just to install, they don't do service. So usually you're looking at the total life cycle.
Right.
Of installation, not just the upfront cost. Because life cycle of equipment is way more important than just the upfront cost.
Any other questions? Did Steve then? Steve, I don't know if you met Steve or.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, we got Andrew, okay. Did you have any particular questions, Steve? Not right now, okay. So I guess for us, um, I guess as long as you provide Peter the details that he needs for us, you know, whatever you have from information there, he'll give it up to us.
Sure, I'll, I'll also give Peter, um, the RFQ that Vassalboro used, actually, I'm sure, I know you talked to Al there. It's a very boilerplate.
Yeah, standard.
Standard thing that you put out there and, um, you know, see who, who wants to interview. You're the next guy.
So in terms of when the calls start going out, Tom, so, you know, we go, we go through the process, we advertise, you know, we allow for the business days, we get three companies, we interview the three companies, we choose a company, and then once a company is chosen, you're gonna go, you're, we look at what is it exactly that we're going to do based on what the money that we have, but when is, when are you paid for your services?
Uh, not until you pick a project and it could be, uh, next year, two years from now, depending on, again, like the one we just did for a big district in Nashville, we've been engineering that thing for two years, but knowing their bond wasn't coming off in two more years. We had done a boiler project for them, an LED project for them, some other roof. They, we knew they wanted a big project, so we started engineering it knowing that we're, we're not gonna make any money for a couple of years because they're waiting for the bond to come off. So we just earmarked what it was gonna be when that time came, but we do a kickoff meeting before we really start doing what we call like an investment grade level audit, where we're really getting into the gritty. And we, we develop a project that makes sense. There's no sense in, in come up with all this stuff, you're like, oh, that's cool if we had ten million dollars to spend right now.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Let's focus on these things.
Good, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. I'll wear a clean outfit, I'm gonna take a quick recess. Manager, we stretch a break.
Thanks, appreciate it. We're gonna put this leak.
It's not very easy.
Great to ask where they're, where the big group from.
Yes.
Oh, is that where they're from?
That's, yeah.
I was impressed with how comprehensive that.
Yeah. I looked it up, I looked it up. I looked it up in there, his picture without, with a beard was on the website and everything else, plus the tell, the information about the tell looks.
Yeah.
That's something that looks like it's world codified and just one of those little things that.
I was pretty impressed.
Yeah, and that's why they're charging you money is because they're, they're going through, they're looking at every, every outlet, every light switch as we.
Well.
Really well. And if it works for everybody, then.
Right. Well, I like how they have it, you know, you could space it out for a project one and phase one, phase two, phase three.
Preventative manuals.
Well, you don't, you know, if the boilers, like you said, they're twenty, twenty-five years old, that's their lifespan. They're actually older than that and, you know, you don't want your boiler to go in January.
That would be unfortunate.
Yeah. No, I was pretty impressed with that. Yeah, really.
Gary, move back over there, throw me off.
Yes.
I have an empty seat.
Girls have to stick together.
All right.
Just stick.
Understandable. We need, we need to keep us guys all in line.
Yeah, really.
Organized. All right, um, very good. So that was great information and we will, uh, hear more about that. All right, next up is report of committees. I don't believe we have any committee reports. Okay, very good. Administrator reports. Missy Gower.
Right, so, uh, just a few dates for the end of the school year. Uh, we do have a fifth and sixth grade band concert coming up on the twenty-second at six-thirty. Um, we also have the fifth and sixth grade chorus concert that's happening the same night as the high school one here at the high school. Our sixth grade students will have a step-up date at the junior high on June second. And our pre-K and kindergarten last day of school will be, uh, June eleventh because the twelfth and thirteenth is the kindergarten screening for incoming kindergarteners. So our current enrollment is five hundred and seventy-three students. Looking at kindergarten registration for next school year, we currently have fifty-four completed registration packets. We had eight that haven't given out and not returned. And then that puts us around, uh, we had sixty-five around this time last year, so it puts us right basically where we were last year. Um, and then our current kindergarten is seventy-three. We usually gaining students between now and, um, the fall. So it looks like our numbers are gonna be pretty close to where they were. One, uh, piece of information, our math and literacy night were last Thursday and you might have seen some information about it, but it was a huge success. We had over two hundred people there. We had the author Josh Elves who, uh, presented and that was very popular. I was able to look at the surveys that parents filled out and, um, many surveys said make it longer, um, that they had such a good time that they wanted it to be longer, um, and, and people had really lots of complimentary things to say. So I wanna take an opportunity to thank all of the staff because there were lots of staff who volunteered, not only that night, but with planning the event. Um, and a special thank you to our literacy specialist Andrea Braggden and our math specialist Keith Martin for spearheading, um, what was a very fun, um, event and our PTO for sponsoring our dinner that night. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, I just wanted to, uh, take a moment to thank Mr. Keith Todd and members of the school board for your consideration and approval for me to be the next principal at elementary school. It's a big honor and I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm looking forward to, um, stepping into that position, uh, for next school year. So thank you and thank you to Erica, she's been very supportive, um, kinda helping with this transition as we get closer to the end of the school year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Congratulations.
All right, Mr. Briggs.
Good evening, everyone. Top actor follow. Couple informational, some information for you and I do have a couple of handouts for dates. I just wanna thank, uh, Mrs. Herschel in Colby College, we finished up our C-CAC Colby Mentor Program, we had barbecue last week for those students. Fantastic programs, just wanna publicly thank them. Our eighth graders completed the numerate and science testing last Thursday, so we'll be talking about the results at upcoming meetings and looking into data, uh, from that testing. Our main through-year testing will begin tomorrow. Seventh day, eighth graders will be testing math tomorrow morning and English and reading, the reading component on Wednesday morning. Uh, we've had our, uh, pep rally assemblies and what Chad and, um, Chris have done at the high school to build it up and, uh, demonstrate the importance of testing for our, for our students. Uh, again, kudos to Mrs. Herschel and her work and, uh, Michelle with the team, um, meetings to prepare us. Uh, late start in service this week, uh, we're gonna be doing a lot of, uh, end of year details because we are winding down. Uh, we've got two field trips on Thursday for the late start. One is a, um, our student teacher, it's Phisen, uh, they're headed to Bangor for a Milti Conference. Uh, students will be exploring cutting-edge technology. Uh, past sessions have focused on multimedia creations, AR, VR, 3D design, robotics, machine learning, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so really excited to bring a group, um, Thursday to Bangor. We also have a JMG field trip on Thursday's late start. Um, this is the eighth grade adventure field trip, it's held at Thomas College statewide, approximately three hundred, um, JMG students come together for this event, uh, to enhance their leadership, problem-solving, communication skills, all the work they've done in the curriculum leading up to this event, so we're really excited about that Thursday. Um, other departments will be working on testing data, um, from our main through-year testing tomorrow and Wednesday, as well as other data we've been collecting on our attendance, behavior, reading and math. Uh, we have started some search committees for, um, jobs that we have opened in the school, one being our science position openings, we're excited about, uh, that and some other upcoming events. Uh, Erica alluded to a couple of them, but we do have a chorus concert on Wednesday the twenty-eighth at six PM and we have our spring band concert on Thursday the twenty-ninth at six-thirty PM. Mr. Clark said attendance. Um, and also on Thursday, the fifth, our band students will be going to the Portland Sea Dogs to perform the national anthem and attend the Sea Dogs Day during the day, so thank you, Mr. Clark. Um, and then we conclude the school year with our field trips and the last day we will do awards presentations, we'll do family invites. Uh, we do hold that in the gymnasium so that we can fit everybody, um, and you're welcome to attend on that half-day, I'll get a, get the schedule out. Uh, we recognize Renaissance and many other awards. And that's all I have, if there are any questions. Don't mind taking a run, just pass it along. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Last Tuesday, we had our final student of the month assembly where we recognized, uh, students for the months of May and June because, so June, we'll, we will, you know, the occasion of that, but, um, so to be recognized, or who was recognized at that assembly for freshmen. For the month of May, we got Jack Flaherty and for the month of June was Jackson Leesoff. Sophomores for May was Donovan Hamlin and June was Bella Lugia. Junior class for May, Madison Pendexter and June was Jennifer Chak. And for our seniors, May was Tila Ward and June was Abby McCaslin. Also, we were notified by the tech center that we had two of our students that were students of the year over at the tech center. Um, Jackson Stej was recognized as part of CTE Academy and Kalen Bullier was part of the early childhood education program. Also at the assembly, those of there you saw it as well, or a few of you attended, Bella Lugia, a sophomore here, um, is, sings and performs all over the place, is, you know, streaming some of her music and whatnot and she performed two of her songs that she wrote to our students before the, the actual assembly itself, um, did a really good job, so that was nice to get her up there. Uh, and finally, uh, prom was last Saturday evening. I missed you all, I didn't like catch any of your hair. We had about a hundred and eighty students, mostly from here, but some guests as well and intended, went very well, uh, no issues whatsoever with our students, it went, went awesome. Uh, and that is because of Kelly Dagno and Melgag, they did such a great job prep and everything, getting things organized, um, decorating, you know, everything that goes into it, it's a lot of work and thanks to them for doing that, so. And that was our prom and that's the final dance of the year. So that was our prom, and that's the final dance of the year. And that's all I have for it.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Thanks for warming up the stage. Um, last week, we also had our NHS induction, and we have sixteen new students who've gotten into NHS, well-deserved. Um, I also want to comment on our testing, and a special thank you to Mr. McNeil, Ms. Garrett, Ms. Maron, and the entire guidance staff, because in the last few weeks, we have AP testing going on, NWEA testing going on, uh, juniors are trying to do science augmentation, plus trying to do all the catch-up and all the makeup for those that miss it. So there really is, it's all while trying to do scholarship committee and, um, build the master schedule and, you know, guidance is, is pretty, pretty, pretty busy, pretty busy place. But thank you to the entire guidance staff for that. End-of-year events. I gave everybody this slip of paper, um, that way, you know, if you forget what I said. But this week, we kick off with the spring play on Wednesday and Thursday at six o'clock. Tickets are five dollars each, available at the door. So if you are looking for some good entertainment, come on up. Uh, next week, uh, Jason already mentioned this, but, uh, we have the chorus concert on the twenty-eighth at six, and the band concert on the twenty-ninth at six-thirty. Um, also, on the twenty-ninth, we do our junior book awards, which we do every year. It's as soon as the seniors get out of the place, we have the students come in and, um, some juniors get awards, parents will be there. Uh, it's a good way to kind of kick off their, what is soon to be their senior year. I'm not going to call them seniors just yet. Then graduation stuff kicks in on the first. We have our senior parade at one o'clock, and then, uh, Project Brad has been planning a baccalaureate, and that will be at six. Class night is Monday, the second, at six o'clock, and that's where we give out lots of scholarships. I do want to point out the amount of money that has come in in the last couple of years to give to our students. And we actually had a couple of donors who really appreciated getting a thank-you letter from our students and have upped their donations, um, just because of the, like, wow, you guys have some good kids, and we want to give you some more money. So, um, there's, there's tons of people, it seems like the last couple of years, just every year, there's a couple more who just, like, hey, I have money and I want to give it to some kids. Well, you called the right guy. Let's give it to them. Um, graduations the fourth, and then, uh, finals kickoff the week of the tenth, and, uh, and then we're done. So it's like, coming up with this list, I'm like, uh, there's really not a whole lot of days left, and, but I can still think of a million things to do, so.
Chad, the tech center graduation, is that this Thursday?
The tech center thing is on Thursday. Sorry, I did not add that. That is this Thursday at, is it seven? At Lawrence High School.
Lawrence Performing Arts Center.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to add that. Anything else? Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Michelle.
I just have a couple of brief things. You can see on the agenda that we have more robust things to talk about momentarily. I wanted to let you know about, um, kind of an exciting thing that's happening the same evening as the chorus concert. So I think we're going to do it the twenty-eighth. It's called the Robots of Art. So, um, this is an idea that came from our, uh, high school, our new high school art teacher. And as you know, we do, uh, the Gift of the Talented Visual Performing Arts programming within our district. And so here's one of the programs that we have done with those students this year. They don't, the little kids don't know what's about to happen, but they know that in the beginning of the year, they were asked to draw some robots of art, and they created these drawings, and they thought that was it. They went on with their year. Well, those drawings were brought over to the high school, and the high school students, uh, have painted those drawings that were paper pencil drawings and they're now canvas paintings that are gorgeous. And, um, we've looped in our Gifted and Talented Music Kids, and we've asked them to create sound bites for each of these robots, and we're going to have those on QR codes. And on the twenty-eighth, we're going to bus the, it's fifteen or so, elementary students over to the high school for an art opening to be buddied up and to see their robots come to life and to be buddied up with a, with a high school kid who gets to say, I made this for you. So we're really excited about that, and, um, we'll have the opening for parents that same evening, because we know we have parents coming into the building for the concert, so we'll have the art display up at that time. But we wanted to ensure that all of the little kids could participate, so we wanted to do something during the school day, guaranteeing we could scoop them all up and have them come over here and do that. So I think that's going to be a really cool, um, kind of thing, and so I'm excited about that. And I was really excited to loop in the music element as well. Uh, this Friday, um, what's this Friday, right? Staff Development Workshop Day this Friday. We've got a presenter coming in to do, um, English Language Arts informational text. She's been working with us all year. She'll come in again Friday. We've got, um, science, time set aside for science, we've got time set aside for social studies, math, and so forth. So it's our last kind of workshop day. The elementary school focuses on classroom things, but the other departments are still moving forward with a different goals and working with it.
Any questions, Michelle? Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, we, uh, finished up our April one child count. We do that, um, every year to look at the amount of students. We have to identify with special education. Um, and right now, we are at three hundred and nineteen. Um, last year's April first count was three hundred and seventeen, and the year before that was two hundred and ninety-six. And it is broken down in by eligibility categories. As you know, if you're interested in that, you could keep it those numbers.
That's K-12, correct?
That is K-12. That's K-12.
Yeah. Then I hope so.
Yeah. Um, we have been doing our CDS transition meetings, so our, um, current four-year-olds becoming five-year-olds coming into kindergarten. Right now, um, we have sixteen identified students that we know of coming into kindergarten. Four with autism, three have multiple disabilities, eight have speech and language, and one, um, is currently under developmental delay. Um, that's kind of a lingering name until the end of kindergarten.
And that sixteen is out of year fifty-four?
Um, yes and no. Some of them have not yet registered.
Have not yet, yeah.
Okay.
So there's only a couple, I believe, that have not yet registered, but, but it's not total. There is a few missing.
Okay.
So how does that compare to previous year?
Uh, for CDS? So I went three years back. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, it was seven. Two thousand and twenty-four was eleven. Similar trend across Maine and across the United States.
You said sixteen.
That we know of.
That's the child find program, correct?
Um, so yes, those are students who have been identified between the ages of birth, three or have IEPs, are receiving early childhood special education services that are coming to kindergarten. Many are identified in kindergarten. Okay, and our in-service day for the support staff, educational technicians, we are doing, um, CPR training. We're doing behavioral health professional training, so we'll have, um, more trained, uh, educational technicians to work with some of these students. And then I have, um, educational technicians who are enrolled in virtual autism training modules that are for certification. They are grant-funded, they do not cost the district anything, but they do go toward their recertification. And they print a certificate out to them, just preparing for the students that are entering.
And questions?
No, I like that you're really including the ed techs.
Yeah.
That a lot of times they kind of get forgotten. Yeah. Good job.
Yeah, that's a, that's just been a wonderful practice here and then.
Thank you.
I will be very brief. Uh, first of all, excuse me for being late. I had a girls' lacrosse game tonight. My feet are soaked and cold.
And you weren't the one running up and down the field?
No, I had to get the field ready. It's been a challenging spring, mother nature has not really been kind to us. Uh, our students were dirt along with wet fields, playing on, on, on not, not good conditions, but things are going well. Um, we got about another week and a half of the season, then we'll start the postseason, but things going well.
And the sun will come out. And the black flies.
No, they're already out.
Cory, I guess? Pretty much covered everything.
Well, it's been quiet the last couple of weeks. Nothing has broken. It's just trying to maintain athletic fields with the, the weather that we can have, and other than that, we're trying to maintain the buildings as well. Uh, we're trying to just keep up with everything.
So you just jinxed yourself by making a statement. You realize that.
All right. Um, Will, did you have anything for us? Oh, good night. All right, very good. No news is good news, right? All right, I think that's all administrators. All right. Uh, Amanda, you're up.
Yeah, so eighty-eight point two percent of the fiscal year has passed, and eighty-four point four-two percent of our budget has been spent. Um, we've been having discussions with payroll and accounts payable, um, to start closely looking up in this month as we near the end of the fiscal year. Um, this time of year, we're getting a lot of invoices and to make sure that everything gets closed out, and we feel very confident that we're, we're, things are good, we're a good place.
All right. That is good. No surprises? All right, thank you. Peter?
Yeah. Just a few transfers to go over with you. Um, Kathleen Fleury, grade six social studies teacher to grade seven ELA teacher. Uh, another transfer is Sam Smith, currently a grade four teacher to grade six social studies teacher. Rachel McInnes, uh, Winslow Elementary School Life Skills Teacher. We transferred to the Winslow Elementary School Resource Room teacher. And Bridget Juara, so currently Winslow Elementary School Behavior Resource Room Ed Tech Three. We transferred to the Winslow Elementary School Academic Resource Room as an Ed Tech Three as well. Those are all, um, voluntary transfers that positions have opened, and these people requested to be transferred in these, in these positions. Uh, we look at the numbers of people who request to transfer, we look at qualifications, and we look at seniority as part of the contract in making those decisions. That's it.
That's it? All right. All is good. Uh, next up is public comment. I know we have some staff here, because we're doing, uh, curriculum things, but nobody here for public comment?
Nope.
All right, if there is not, I will, uh, refrain, because I know you all love it, my introduction to public comment. Uh, for those that are interested that are listening online, it's on our website. Check it out. Must, must-read stuff if you're, so. And gives you an introduction to public comment and how it works. All right, so public comment is closed. We will now move on to all business, and we have the second reading of policy ACAD.
Is it policy on hazing?
Yes. Please. That is correct. And so this is the second reading, and nothing changed from the first reading, I presume?
Nothing.
So.
Note that you put the revised date to the state on there.
Yes. Today is our adoption date. Assuming we adopted.
Motion to adopt.
All right. Do we have a second on the second read?
Second.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of approving the second read of policy ACAD hazing? All right, yes, good, thank you. New business. We already saw the presentation from Andrew and the consultants, which is good stuff. Next is the nine-to-twelve school counseling curriculum.
So we're very excited to be here this evening, presenting a number of curriculum items for you. We have, we have another slew of them coming in June, so a lot of work we've done around the district. My role this evening is to briefly introduce, um, our guests and let them speak, uh, about the work that they've done, the curriculum that you, uh, you were sent, uh, copies of, and to make the board aware of content, skills, and standards that are being addressed. So we'll start with our nine-to-twelve, uh, school counseling curriculum. We brought before you K through eight previously. So you'll recall that our counselors, our school counselors do not teach courses in the traditional way. Um, even though we structured the documents to be a unit and so forth, you understand, given the nature of their other work, that a unit is much shorter, it might be a singular, uh, visit or, um, meeting, classroom experience, or so forth with the class. Um, but these are things that they do with all kids. So nine-to-twelve, Tom's here and Lori's here to share with you a little bit about that.
Uh, good evening. Thank you very much for having us. Uh, Tom McNeil, one of, uh, the two school counselors, and this is Lori Moore, who's our career and college access advisor, which is another member of the school counseling office. And then, uh, the, um, Aaron rounds out the rest of the school counseling team for us. Um, we'd like to begin by saying thank you, uh, Michelle. You would not be standing here before you tonight with a, what we feel is a pretty good document tied to what does the state expect and what does Winslow High School do for preparing kids to be career and life-ready, and so thank you for that very much. Um, we do, uh, feel that we meet the state standards, um, pretty well. Uh, we spend, as you mentioned, the job of, uh, counselors and advisors can be fairly broad with what we do, but we try to spend at least a third of our entire school year is directly delivering this curriculum to students. And, uh, we deliver that kind of three different ways. The first is individual, which I think is a little bit, uh, frankly, unique, uh, to our school. I've worked, uh, in other school systems that do a nice job, but Winslow's the first one where we set aside a tremendous amount of time to meet with each student who's in eighth grade entering high school. We will create, um, a four-year plan for them about courses that they might take, kind of early thinking. Um, and then again, in their junior year, we bring in each individual student and their family to spend anywhere from forty-five minutes to another hour, uh, talking about, you know, your opportunities in the military, uh, jobs that you might look for and how to find them, um, in the area, or those of our students who are heading off to college. So we do a lot of individual stuff, right, to students and families. Also, uh, beyond those, and then we'll have traditional meetings as well with kids and what their needs are, and we meet several times during the senior year, trying to help them to navigate applying, applying for financial aid. Um, and we're hitting all students. Um, the next way that we're reaching students is, uh, through all grade level, like the full, like, what do we do for all ninth graders? What do we do for all sophomores? And that's where Lori's position, um, makes an immense difference in our school. We, uh, start the year in October with a, uh, day of helping students to look at how ready am I initially for career and college readiness, using the PSAT as one measure in ninth grade. Our juniors are doing that also in mid-October. Our sophomores are taking the main through-year assessment, which is how the state and the community is measuring, how we're doing teaching and reading and math skills. And then Lori takes all of our seniors to Kennebec Valley Community College, and they do financial literacy, uh, for that entire morning. So that's all kids get these experiences consistently. Then kickoff, and as soon as that's over, Lori's planning our futures day, um, in November, where every student and every teacher goes on a trip. And it might be to Chinbro or Bath Iron Works, might be to Bangor, your national guard base, might be to Colby College, Central Maine Community College. We're doing thirteen different trips. Students every year get to choose, um, a career or. a career or college experience that they're kind of intrigued or interested in. Or maybe that's where their friends are going too. That, that may also drive. Yeah, for the, for the reputation of food is outstanding. For all sophomores, we take them to Mid-Maine Tech Center, so they have that full experience to look at all of the career experiences that can be provided there and the training. With all juniors, we'll be taking them two days from now to the college fair. Again, it's a lot of making sure all kids are getting these experiences. And then the last part of how we deliver our school counselor's curriculum, kind of like Michelle was saying, is probably the most traditional, where we're actually in classroom-sized groups with students. Thank you, Joel, from when we talked at the curriculum committee, you mentioned, hey, you got this big curriculum, but where do kids learn? What is the GPA and how does that get calculated? And how important is this? How's this helping in the future? And so that's, after that feedback, we designed a lesson and we were in our social studies classrooms for ninth graders where economics is being covered as a state standard. And we're giving them their report card from the first half of the year. We're teaching them how to calculate what their GPA is. Then we're going through a bunch of slides, like what will this GPA do for me? You know, would I be able to get this opportunity at this college? What kind of money might come along with my achievement in high school? So that was a great addition. Then we spend a lot of time with our juniors halfway through the junior year, planning for senior year. We're in, in their English classrooms for two full block periods, so spending a lot of time with them. We thank the English department for that. And then the last time that we're students all together in classroom settings is their senior year. So again, you could see we spend a third of our entire year trying to ensure all kids are getting the standards that are mentioned in the career life-ready standards. You know, finally, we really would like to take this opportunity, two sets of thanks. The first is to the JMG and Melmac Foundation, which makes Lori's position possible, makes the opportunity to take students to see things outside of our building possible. And then, you know, our administrators, you know, Chad, Chris, Peter, for really supporting the work that we do as school counselors and trying to make, protect our time to get into classroom settings. So that's kind of all we had for prepared remarks.
Any questions?
I think in your board packet digitally, we don't print them out again because they're robust, as you see. There's a ninth grade course, tenth grade course, and so forth with the standards. The content we want all kids to know and the skills we want all kids to be able to do. So if you've got any questions about what you saw there.
Just the comment, the work that you do is outstanding. Thank you.
As Chad alluded, we've got a great team in our office and thank you. We appreciate the support.
There's tremendous information in those curriculum documents. We'll discuss the other ones as well.
The curriculum packets.
Robust.
Robust, yes.
That's a good word.
No.
Michelle prepared us well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
So do you have the?
We do actually need to vote to adopt the school counseling curriculum. So do we have a motion to approve the nine, twelve school counseling curriculum?
Motion to adopt.
May I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the nine, twelve school counseling curriculum? All right, any units? Very good. Thank you. Next up is the seventh and eighth grade gifted and talented services.
So this item is a proposed change. So I'm going to read a brief statement and then the instructor is here to kind of read the all verbal detail and answer questions. So gifted and talented students identified in the areas of mathematics, reading, visual performing arts, and general overall gifted and talented, those are kind of the categories. For several years, we've offered middle-level GT services through a science class where GT-identified students had a GT-science course in place of a general ed-science course. And through that GT course, students were challenged in either math or reading accordingly, but it was delivered through the science as its core content. Math students traditionally have also been accelerated through the math program to meet those needs all the way up to Algebra I that we offer in the eighth grade. We're proposing a change to that model. Students would now receive their GT services through ELA, English Language Arts class, as well as through the accelerated math courses. We feel that the rigor of the general education science courses is adequate to meet the needs of GT students and since GT students are identified in reading and math primarily, offering services through ELA courses is a better fit for most students. Jessica Bissin is here to talk a little bit about some of her thoughts about making that change and some of the ideas we've come up with for our units for English Language Arts versus Science. So welcome, Jessica, and thank you for being here. I will say that this proposal has gone before the curriculum committee and it's gone before the gifted and talented committee. Anyone has approved it, but we're bringing it to you.
That's I, Jessica Bissin. So this is my first year as a gifted and talented, first of the eighth, and I also teach sixth grade math and STEM. So like Michelle said, GT students are currently identified in third and fifth grade in reading and/or math. And so currently what is happening is when they come to seventh grade, they all come together for science, regardless of whether they were identified, meaning reading, math, or both. So what we're proposing is to change it from a science core class to an ELA. So the schedule wouldn't change, just instead of coming to meet for third period for science, they would go see Mr. Walton or the new eighth grade teacher and come to meet for ELA in STEM. And then the same with the seventh and eighth grade. And this is going to provide continuity from grades three through eight. Now you'll have reading and math instead of switching to science. I've talked with ELA teachers from sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, and they all are pretty enthusiastic about it and they think it would work really well for the students and for those higher learners. I'll continue to teach sixth grade Excel math in my STEM class, just instead of science, which currently means the step-up curriculum, which is the same curriculum that is taught in the general ed seventh and eighth grade. So they'll still be getting that. We'll meet the same ELA state standards that they would do in the general ed class, but an emphasis on more challenging materials and critical thinking skills. I have a thousand ideas running through my brain of what to do next year with a smaller class size, highly motivated students. I think the possibility is pretty endless. I'd love to do some journalism. National History Day, they have a big competition and everything in May, and Maine has a robust chapter, things like that. And I just think, I think the students are excited too. Really avid readers coming up, and I know the kids because a lot of them have had a sixth grade math. And currently, right now, I'm in the second round of testing for fifth grade. So this wouldn't affect them until next year, well, the year after. They'll go into sixth grade either reading or math with me and then seventh and eighth grade ELA. Does anybody have any questions?
Sounds good to me. I agree. I think the science, moving from the science to ELA is a good move, I think, yeah.
I've got one question. What was the rationale behind directing them towards the science instead of where they were identified?
I think that was the strength of the teacher we had in the position.
Okay.
And, you know, she really worked hard to address where they were identified, but through the medium of science. So maybe more rigorous reading level, more challenging math than they might have done in general ed science. But I think in large part it was the strength of the teacher we had. And, you know, we have a new teacher, so we're able to look at that again.
Reassess.
Anybody have any questions? No, I like the change though.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're excited too.
I am.
We do need to vote on that.
Someone to change?
Second, okay. Any other discussion?
You can do it next.
All right. Okay, no other discussion. All in favor of approving the gifted and talented services that presented? Very good, thank you. Next up, visual and performing arts, gifted and talented band.
So Ben is here this evening to talk about a very unique and special opportunity he brought to our gifted and talented students in the area of visual performing arts, specifically the area of music. And so thank you, Ben, for being here and share with them the exciting thing that happened this year.
Well, most of you that know me know that I'm very passionate about the subject matter that I teach, and I'm always looking for ways to challenge my students and just come up with, with new things to expose them to in the, in the realm of music. One of the things that came out of last year's project that I led was we were doing, we did a Meridian Stories project. And that was something that I brought to Michelle at the start of last year because although I appreciate the opportunity to go on field trips, I know that particularly my middle school students are motivated by project-based learning. And so I volunteered to sort of oversee that and we, we came up with a project through the Meridian Stories project called Math a Musician Explains It All. And so they were using math to just create a podcast to tell about a musical concept and how they could use math to, to solve the problem, if you will. So I was looking at some things over the summer and tried to find another project like that that would fit. Just nothing, nothing seemed to, to work really that piqued my interest, at least, that I wanted to bring to the kids. But they had mentioned in the previous, in previous year about how many of them were interested in composition. And I did a couple of community courses and I do the whole band program here, and those are, those are my strengths. Composition is not one of my strengths. So I started thinking over the summer about who do I know that could be involved and maybe come do some, some Google Meet sessions or something like that and teach them about composition. And I, my, my brain settled on my theory professor from my undergraduate years at Malone College back in the late nineteen nineties and early two thousands. And he just recently retired, but he worked at Malone for, from the time that I was there all the way through this past year, actually. So I gave him a call in August and I said, how, how could this maybe work? And he was like, you know, have you ever thought about doing a commission project? And I was like, no. And so we talked about that a little bit. And then I brought the idea to the students and they were really excited about being able to work with a live composer. So I went back to Dr. Ayers and, and said, yeah, let's see what we can do to, to get this going. And so that was, that was September, early October. I had him come and meet with the, the students via, via Google Meet and tell them a little bit about the compositional process and what he does. And so then I had a conversation with him. I was like, you know, I, I know you're not going to do this for free, but like, you know, can you, can you give me an idea of how much this is going to cost? And it ended up, I was quite surprised that it was, it was quite an expensive proposition. But I will say that thanks to a grant from the Peter R. Marsh Foundation, which is a grant for middle school music going out into the community, performing for seniors. They were, they have supported us in this project and the Winslow Performing Arts Boosters as well have supported us. So we were able to afford to, to do this project without any, any additional funds from the budget or anything like that. So that was, that was excellent. Just looking down my timeline with, so after meeting with Dr. Ayers, the, the kids decided this is, they gave him some ideas about what kind of piece that they would like to have and then told him a little bit about our band's strengths and weaknesses. And then they actually had to go in and write out of each, each instrument's range that they felt was appropriate for the different age levels. Because we started out with it just being a junior high thing, when you're just going to have them write a junior high band piece for us. And then I was like, you know, what, what would it take beyond that to have a little bit more challenging part for the high school students and a little bit less challenging part for the elementary students so that we could have a, a piece that everybody could come together and perform? Grade six through eight, uh, six through twelve, I'm sorry. And so that's what we ended up settling on. And he wrote us a barn burner of a piece. And we got to, to hear the score and see it on, on paper for the first time, the, the students in the, in the GT class in December. And then we started rehearsing it with all three groups in January. Just a little, little tiny piece at a time. And I don't know how many of you got a chance to see the video where the, the students got to talk a little bit about it. But it's, it's just been a real, it's been a blast. It's been the coolest, coolest music project I've ever been a part of as, as far as, as a, as a teacher. And the kids have been really excited about it. I asked the kids today, I said, I'm going to go present about this to the, to the school board tonight, and I said, can you give me a word, just one word about your experience with this? And this is what their list was. Fun, cool, effort, exciting, epic, extraordinary, exciting, nice, weird, good, cool, energy, togetherness, repetitive, exhilarating, unorthodox, difficult, challenging, fun, cool, loud, hard, different, amazing, challenging, excitement, fun, and sigma.
Of course.
I want to say thank you to Mr. Versani and Blackwater News Network for helping us put together the video that we produced that, that went out this past week. We are to the point now where we have a one-hour rehearsal next Thursday morning where, sorry, two-hour rehearsal. Well, that, we, we already had an hour rehearsal. We have a two-hour rehearsal with all three bands happening next Thursday morning here in gym. And that's going to be where we, where we put all the final, final pieces together for, for the concert. And we will be presenting the world premiere of the piece next Thursday at our concert on the twenty-ninth. So I asked the students to come up with some things that they learned about the commissioning process. These were the GT students. And they said, it takes a long time to get a finished product, many drafts, corrections, revisions, kind of like the writing process in English Language Arts. I was glad you made that correlation. It's expensive. We appreciate all the partners who helped collaborate with us in the experience. It's important to have interesting parts, but the process of how they are all put together is complicated. There has to be something about either the title or the introduction of the piece that hooks people in and makes them want to listen. So hopefully you heard that in the video and are excited to come hear the rest of it. Not everyone learns their music at the same rate. We have to be patient with our fellow musicians and help them to learn the music at their own pace and try not to get frustrated. And finally, they said, we're impressed with the level of musicianship and attention to detail that it takes for a composer to write such a large-scale composition. No wonder it's so expensive. Takes a long time. So I just want to close by reading a statement by the GT music class and inviting you all to come hear the performance next Thursday if you have an opportunity. Having the opportunity to work with a live composer this year was educational and fun. Dr. Ayers was professional, yet at the same time, very good at working with us and considering our band's preferences, strengths, and limitations. We are very grateful for this opportunity and would like to personally thank Mr. Tivatot and the Winslow School Board for the support of this project. We hope that many of you will be able to join us for our world premiere of this commissioned work at our spring band concert on Thursday, May twenty-ninth at six thirty PM in the high school. Any questions?
I was, I did watch the video this morning, actually. I was really impressed with the level of knowledge that those kids have on just the mechanics of music. So kudos to you for teaching that. So, kudos to you for teaching that. I can't, I mean, they were, I was impressed. It was like, I don't even know what these kids are talking about. It was, yeah. And their enthusiasm for the project. So, and thank the professor.
That's very cool. Yeah, it's going to be fun. We're looking forward to the live performance. So, the title of the performance, the, he let the kids pick the title. I was like, "Okay, oh, that's interesting." It's called "Rain of the Raiders: Whirl Premiere." You'll have to come to the concert to see what the whirl is about.
So, that's what you did. I'm curious as though where, where you see this going forward. I mean, because you got, this is seven A, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
This is a once-in-a-lifetime experience for these kids in sixth through 12th grade. Because it is expensive and there are other things that we want to address in the curriculum besides just composing and stuff like that. We'll get, we'll get to keep a copy of the piece. And if I decide in 10 years that I want to pull it out again and do it, maybe I will. So, but it's going to be a really neat, it's been, it's already been a really neat experience for these kids. And when they get to perform it for their, their peers and their parents and grandparents and hopefully, some of you, it'll be, it'll be really cool.
Sounds good.
And thanks for speaking around for such a long meeting to hear my thoughts. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben. Right, so, the Visual Performing Arts Curriculum, that was something, Alpha Gifted and Talented was part of the package. So, we need to take a vote on approving the curriculum as it was presented.
It was kind of a one-time experience. I think he just really wanted to invite you all.
All right. Well, we did have it as an action item, so I guess there's nothing truly approved.
I was going to say.
It's a done deal.
It's a done deal. He did it without our approval, it's okay.
No, it's great that that came together. I'll definitely be trying to get to that concert. All right, while that being said, we will move on to K-5 Media Literacy.
All right, Heidi isn't able to be here this evening, so I will do my best to represent the work that we've done. Similar to the work that we've done with school counseling, we've taken several months to document the curriculum for media literacy across the district. Tonight, we bring you the K through 5 Media Literacy Courses. There are two courses, a K-2 and a 3.5. Similar to school counseling, the media literacy courses do not look like the traditional classroom courses. While a unit in a science class may be several weeks long with several lessons within it, a unit in the media literacy course may be much shorter. Students meet for media literacy one time a week for about 30 minutes or so. Therefore, the lessons are shorter and the units are smaller. That said, a lot of important learning is taking place in these courses that we wanted to have documented and more improved. Heidi Murray is the teacher of these courses, and she emphasizes that media literacy is so much more than navigating books in a library. Her courses are about information, how it is gathered or found, how it is applied for a variety of purposes, and how it is communicated. You'll note that at the time you received your copies of the curriculum and when we printed them, there were no standards referenced on those documents. The main Department of Education does not have formal standards for library and media classes, and so, we turned our attention to the American Association of School Librarians and the standards that are written there and built the courses around those standards. I reached out to Atlas following our curriculum committee meeting and asked that those standards be put into Atlas so that we could actually plug them in. And Atlas responded, much to my surprise, immediately. So, Heidi has been working on going back into each of those units and just putting in the American School of Library standards. Those standards are built on six common beliefs, that the school library is a unique and essential part of the learning community, qualified librarians lead effective school libraries, learners should be prepared for college, career, and life, reading is the core personal and academic competency, intellectual freedom is every learner's right, information technologies must be appropriately integrated and equitably available. So, the standards, those are the front guiding principles of those standards. So, you don't have those in front of you, but you do have the content that all kids know and the skills all kids will be able to do in grade K-2.
Any questions? Obviously, digital media is a little thing.
So, she does, I mean, with the, you can see from the units, with the little kids, you know, I love the unit on who am I as a reader. I love the unit on how do we handle our books for the little kids who don't know what is a library, how is it organized? I mean, they're really great new topics that are so important.
Yeah. I mean, also, these kids don't know if they're not taught that, basic stuff. So, I found that to be an interesting concept to read back to that. And it's like, oh, yeah, yeah, I guess we all did have to learn that at some point in our lives. All right, any questions from Michelle on behalf of Heidi?
This is for the K-5.
This is K-5. We're doing the.
Six, eight.
Six, eight.
Fourth with.
Yep. All right.
I like where you went to get the standards.
Yeah.
We did something similar with technology, that the state did not have them, so, you know, we'll help us out. We went to the national, similar practice.
So, if there's no questions, do we have a motion to approve the K-5 Media Literacy?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Who do you get, Dave?
Dave.
I'll do it, yep.
Very good. All right. All right, no other discussion? All in favor of approving the K-5 Media Literacy? A lot of good work there.
Yes.
In all its curriculum. So, next up is the six, six to eight Media Literacy. So, UA, it's a new course proposal for pilot.
Right, so, the part that you have physically to do is the new course proposal form. The part that was emailed to you is the actual units and so forth. So, this is a proposal. As we consider our media literacy education across the entire district, we recognize that there is a gap in services that takes place in grades six through eight. So, the kids, the little kids have their library time every week, there's a gap. And then, the high school kids have not scheduled library time, but they do come in here pretty frequently, I think, with classwork and so forth. And so, that middle level, we wanted to look at more closely. Knowing that students in grades six through eight are at a critical age and that these students often face challenges related to proper and safe use of technologies, processing volumes of information related to social media, navigating the intersection of media and interpersonal communications and so forth, and Jason can tell you, and Chris as well, grade six through eight, this is a hot topic. There are some needs. Heidi has proposed a new course to help address this gap that we identified. This course will take place one time a week. This is the proposal, one time a week, and it would only be on Fridays. It will overlap with an existing tech ed UA course. So, students will take tech ed in their UA rotation, but within that class, embedded in, within it will be every Friday, they will be pulled out and will come in here for media literacy. The reason we did that is because it doesn't disrupt anyone's schedule. And we can pilot this class in this way with little disruption to the rest of the master schedule, in fact, no disruption, except for, you'll talk with Andy and sort of like about what his schedule looks like. This will allow Heidi to teach three units per grade in grades six through eight. This coming year is intended to serve as a pilot year for this course. We will revisit this course throughout the coming year and by the year's end, bring the course back to the curriculum committee with any recommendations about continuing the course, expanding the course, or eliminating the course. We're cautious about adding a UA course as we have existing UA courses now, and we only have so many students to populate those classes. So, that was a concern that was brought up by the, a member of the curriculum committee that we talked about. And it was almost a kick the can down the road in the sense that we want to try this and let's just see. And depending on how this goes, then we'll decide what our next steps are. So, we can almost push that decision out another year before we have to decide, do we do anything different with UA's? Does this model of delivery work? Maybe we keep it that way or so forth. So, Jason, Kate Hurson, Heidi, myself, we've met several times about this and we will continue, we agreed to continue throughout the year to touch base on how this was going. That said, the curriculum committee did feel that this proposed media literacy course will offer students critical information that is timely in their development at junior high. If the course moves forward, we will look at the grade six school counseling curriculum and change the cyber safety unit to another topic, because there is no shortage of topics that the school counselor could choose to do. Right now, she's doing the internet safety unit in her curriculum. Heidi has designed that in her curriculum. So, we'll run both of those next year. And if we're going to keep the media literacy class, I think we'll release Kate from that topic. And there's a slew of other topics she could choose from to fill in a unit there. So, you were provided with a sample of, you know, each, each, each grade would get like an introductory to the library. The course will be in here. And then, there are two units for each grade. Again, addressing some things we thought were pretty important for this age group to be exposed to.
That is the question.
I think it's outstanding that you've done this work with that one with, you're looking at this, at that age level. It's crucial, absolutely crucial.
The other thing that was important was for the middle school students to see this as their space as well. So, Chad, we met with Chad. He graciously said it's not a problem for him, he will not schedule anything Friday mornings for this media center so that the junior high can have it exclusively, that they can come in and have this class and the high school won't even have it as an option of just on those Friday mornings, and then it would open up to regular scheduling. So, thank you to the high school for accommodating that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it's needed.
Definitely an important age group for that. So, do we have a motion to approve this as a pilot program?
Yes, salute.
Okay, second? Second, all right. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the six through eight Media Literacy Pilot? Any with unanimous?
Thank you. And finally, I'll just quickly say that Heidi's also working on media literacy for the high schools, so that we have a K-12, similar to what we've done in all the content areas. That, those, that focus will be a little bit different, where she's looking to team teach with teachers in the school with an emphasis on researching and so forth. So, she's already lined up in the Language Arts Department. As I already said, we would be willing to partner with you and create some, some unit and content around that. We have a Science Department person that we think would be willing to partner with her. So, that's still being developed, but our goal is to have a K-12 comprehensive media Thank you.
Sounds good. All right. So, next up is First Read of Policy GCSA, which is Employee Computer and Internet Use. Basically, what we did is we struck what we had and took the MSMA sample policy, which largely was, they were fairly close generally anyway, but obviously, this one is more up to date than our 2011 version, given what computer and internet use is these days.
Robust.
Yes, robust, that is the word of the day. So, as you can see, we took the sample policy and there's the rules that go with it as well that explain further. And you can see the one strike through for computer startup page, because that's not so much a thing. And it's not always just computers anyway, it could be any sort of device that accesses that information, so. So, you can read it, it's pretty straightforward stuff. Important stuff, though. Do we have a motion to approve the First Read of Policy GCSA and its accompanying rules?
Motion.
Karen, do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? Very good. All right, then all in favor of approving the First Read of Policy GCSA and the accompanying rules? Chris, announce. Thank you. All right, next up is the First Read of Policy EEAFA, Video Surveillance on School Property. And again, that was a replacement, replacement of our current policy, which again, was dated.
Do you want to point out that the normaculture changed on this? Because our normaculture that we had was a little different than what the MSMA was. It is important to match them, because if you ever have an issue and you reach out to the attorneys, they start talking normaculture and they can't find your policy. So, it's important to have the same normaculture, to the degree possible.
Right. Yep, so our old one was ECA. So, put now, put in the normaculture. So, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it was generally the same, but of course, updated with as necessary. So, do we have a motion to approve the First Read of EEAFA?
So, move.
All right. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right. Very good, any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't need to bog us down here, but what, what kind of thought processor goes into where we're going to put cameras? What is the kind of?
Certain places where they can send, where they can go, certain places where they can't go, like bathrooms.
Right, obviously.
You know, you put them in, you put them in high-traffic areas where you think there's going to be issues.
And this is for like, security, is that what?
Safety is all it is. And right now, you have an incident that might occur, the administrator quickly turns the cameras to see what they could capture on footage to kind of review. And it's, it's basically just that, that certain individuals have access to those cameras, not, not everyone, just certain individuals has a need-only access.
I noticed that on the list, it says basically, put it anywhere except for bathrooms and other private spaces and private offices. There's no cameras in classrooms, right?
Correct.
And that's not something that's like being considered or anything like that. As well as, I mean, because I always, there's kind of like a, I don't know, want to have security and everything, but at the same time, you also don't want a police state where you're, you know, like you're under microscope all the time.
Because generally, in a classroom, the teacher's there and they're in control of that classroom. When they're passing the hall and there's not.
Necessarily, everybody's in control.
Right, places like that.
And that was discussed at the policy meeting, was making sure that the classroom was, closed the door, but the cameras for the class, the hallway.
Okay, so that's, that kind of goes back to my first question. That's the kind of the criteria I was looking for.
Yeah. And I didn't say on the previous policies, I mean, for a second read, whatever, these are all been through the policy committee to review and such for.
All, all good questions, Dave. I think teachers would be very uncomfortable having the eye on them all day long.
Yeah, and the students too, as a student.
And students have, you know, they, is a student going to be willing to speak up in class and talk about something when they sometimes don't even want to talk in front of their own fellow students, let alone to the camera? You know, it's a whole different animal, right? Yeah. We want safety and security, but we also want students to be comfortable, students and staff to be comfortable in the environment so they can deliver education as it used to be.
Right.
Everybody's safe and secure. So. All right, so any other questions or discussion? Important stuff?
Yes.
All right, there being none, all in favor of approving the first read of policy E E A E F A? Better, you know.
This one.
That one.
What time is it?
All right, these unanimous. E E A E F A. All right, so that was approved unanimously. Next up is permission for the superintendent to issue contracts from June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to September fifteenth, twenty twenty five. That is so that allows Peter to hire people while we are not. For example, we don't have a July meeting, so we've got quite a span there for us, Peter, to act and hire judiciously as necessary to get the best staff. So it's something we do every year. So do we have a motion to provide that permission? I present.
So moved.
So moved? Second? All right. Any discussion? All in favor of approving permission for superintendent to issue contracts? For that, I think, that'd be unanimous. Next up is the budget validation referendum warrant and notice of election.
So we have this for you to sign. We already, you already signed this portion, which Audrey at the town needed before she could accept the absentee ballots back. But we also have this for you to sign. The town council has already signed it. She didn't give me the top portion, she just gave me the signature page. So if you want to see what that is, I pulled out last year's, it's this. Just needs to be posted, I think, during the election.
Yeah. Standard legal stuff.
Yeah, I want to see the top page then.
What did Audrey sign it?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a little trust with these people, you know, they're not.
Don't want to find myself in Afghanistan or someplace weird like that.
Yeah, we're thinking Libya, Libya is one of the new vacations.
Libya, okay.
Hopefully, we catch up with our absentee members.
Our one is.
That's last year's. I just pulled back because Audrey didn't give you this year's. Just so you would know what, just so they would know what they were signing.
But this year's is going to say approved by the town council. This is approved by the, in accordance to the town charter with amended language, because this is a three three vote, but that's.
We'll have to ask Audrey for it to produce that. Oh, okay, nice.
Yep.
Like a warrior.
You got it, man. And she said, maybe this is last year's?
Yeah, this is last year's.
She's just going to make sure.
You want to be sure.
Yeah, because it was five two this year.
Yes, it was approved by the town. No language issue, she'd be able to go back to the old way of doing it. Last year was.
A little odd.
An aberration, and hopefully don't do that. Well, I guess by signing, we voted to approve.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Written evidence. Okay. Well, that was unanimous. All right, next up. Probationary ones, appropriationary twos, continuing and annual contracts. And you've got, our list is listed on the agenda of the probationary ones and twos. We just need to vote to approve, continue them.
I think the important thing to know is that nobody who is P ones or P twos have not, they've all been recommended to continue on.
Okay. And do we need a separate motion to continue P one, P two and annuals? Or are we taking it all as?
It's all one as a group.
You have, you can, you can vote to do that, but you've got several things going on here. You've got the retired, returning to work staff, forever probationary ones, that's one category. And then you've got the, so you've got that group.
Yep.
And then you've got the P ones to twos. And then you have the twos to continuing, the continuing to annuals. So you have several categories.
We can take them individually or?
Motion to take all four groups, all four categories as a singular group.
Okay.
I was saying that.
Second.
I wasn't sure if that was legally a priority to do that.
Well, as long as we make a motion to do it. So we have the motion, any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor of taking these four contracts as a group? And unanimous. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the group of, like, group of four?
Motion to approve.
Four. Four types of appointments, there we go.
Motion to approve all four groups.
Okay.
That's right.
Second.
Wait, motion and second. Any discussion? Okay. All were in favor of approving four groups of appointments. And it is unanimous. Very good.
I suppose I'm taking it as a group, did you catch it?
Earl.
Earl and then Karen, and then the second one was Karen and all.
Just being quiet tonight.
Right.
On the appointments, we had permission to add.
Yep.
Kate Poole in Tech Three in the Title One program. And also permission to add Megan Reed as a kindergarten teacher.
Reed, R E I D?
E, two Es, R E E D.
And what was the?
Kindergarten teacher.
Oh, W A S. Okay. All right. Very good. No wish of anybody adding those? So given that, do we have a motion to approve the amended appointments?
So moved.
Well, excuse me, excuse me, do I need to, that's usually the way we do it.
So motion to, to take those three as a group.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of taking the appointments as a group? Okay, unanimous. Do we have a motion to approve the group?
Motion to approve the group.
All right.
David.
Second, second, all right. Any discussions? All in favor of approving group appointments? All right, very good. You name it.
Read the first on that? No, read the first motion.
Karen and Earl was the first motion, and then the second time was Earl and David.
Yeah.
Sorry, I mixed it up.
It's getting confusing.
All right. And some resignations, which.
Going to add one there as well.
Okay.
Alexandria Mishel, school social worker.
So resignation, this is information because Peter accepted those. Other business, do we have any other business?
No other business, but just a reminder to share with your friends, community members, anybody that you'd like to share with to exercise their right to vote on June tenth. The school budget is the only thing the citizens of this community will be voting on. It's not a primary year, and so it will be important to garner some enthusiasm for that particular day. I will put, I will be putting out another letter to the school community, but not necessarily to the regular community unless it's posted on Facebook by somebody.
Just to remind people to vote.
Correct.
Yep. Do your civic duty. All right, very good. Next, we have no executive session, so our next regularly scheduled meeting is June twenty third at six P M, right here. And unless anybody has anything else.
Do we still, if somebody's not going to be present, are they allowed to video in and participate? Or is it just video to observe?
If you allow a board member to video in and participate, you have to open up the video for anybody who's watching today to participate. So it's best to just observe.
Okay. So I will not be here on the twenty third.
Okay. We had a long agenda this time. Usually, the one in June is.
It's going to be long.
It'll be long?
We have an executive session.
Oh, okay, it'll be long, all right. So be it. All right, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn? Come on, Dave.
I moved.
All right.
Yay.
All right, we have a second?
Oh, yeah.
Aaron, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, Ernie, for sticking with us. I know that was a long meeting.